All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to God, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got a little ahead of myself. We're officially beginning our regular business meeting of Monday, November 17th. I'll also begin, as we always do, by acknowledging the land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chippewa peoples, who have stewarded this land through the generations. Thank you for your strength and resilience in protecting this land and inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. With that, Sarah, can I have you do the roll call, please?
Yep. Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Mayor Protem Ness?
Here.
Commissioner Funk?
Present.
Mayor?
Here. All right, and I'm going to now hand our...hand it over to the interim city manager Benjamin Maritut, especially to lead off this meeting in particular.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge just how heartbroken we are that a city employee, Lawrence Boyd IV, was killed while working in our Larry C. Hardy parking garage on Saturday. We are just...our hearts are broken for our employee team, for his family. I spoke at length with his mother this morning. And I just want to say that Lawrence was just so happy to work for the city. He had a real heart for service when he was asked, just a few months ago, when he joined our organization, what accomplishment he was most proud of in his career, in any of his career life, I should say. It was saving someone else's life. And so, I just want to acknowledge him and just take a moment and have a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we will go to our...through our business now. Do you have any other announcements at this time, Benjamin?
Yes. I do. Give me just a second.
It's never easy to come off of this and have to do our regular business, so I...
Thank you. I want to also, in connection with that tragedy, thank our Traverse City Police Department for their work. The sequence events was such that the killing happened before our police officers had the foot chase. And if they hadn't apprehended the suspects, probably even more lives would have been impacted. So I thank the humans that make up our Traverse City Police Department. I want to thank our other law enforcement partners, our first responders, and we're just very grateful for their work. And with that, I just want to make a couple of miscellaneous announcements, and that is, of course, that the city has a weekly e-newsletter called the Bay Brief. I encourage folks to sign up for that on our website. We want to remind residents and business owners, as we will eventually have snow and ice return, to please keep their sidewalks clear for the safety and accessibility of everyone. And I...that's all that I've got. Thank you.
Okay. And Sarah, any announcements from you for the city clerk?
Just that there are several meetings scheduled this week. The Planning Commission has a special meeting this Tuesday, the 18th, at 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers. The Art Commission will meet on Wednesday, November 19th, at 3:30 in the committee room. The Joint Planning Commission will meet on Wednesday, November 19th, at 5:15 at Garfield Township Hall. The Historic Districts Commission will meet on Thursday, November 20th, at noon in the chambers. And the Brown Bridge Advisory Committee will meet Thursday, November 20th, at 5:15 in the training room. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And before I have you read the consent calendar, I wanted to share with everyone that item number five will be removed for this week. There's some other business that we need to take care of in association with that, so we'll come back at our next business meeting likely, but that is removed from the consent calendar. So with that, Sarah, that's...sorry, that's the MMR contract, for those who might be waiting in the audience to speak on that. So Sarah, will you read the consent calendar as amended now already, I guess we could say?
Yes. The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for individual consideration by the commission, and such requests will be automatically respected. If an item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. One, consideration of approving the minutes of the October 20th, 2025, meeting of the City Commission. Approval recommended. Two, consideration of rescinding Traffic Control Order 554, which provides for 15-minute loading zone at 300 East Front Street. Approval recommended. Three, consideration of waiving the competitive bidding process and authorizing amendment to the existing agreement for mobile payments for parking, which would extend the term of the agreement for five years with no cost to the city. Approval recommended. Four, consideration of authorizing an agreement to accept $30,160 in grant funds from the Michigan State Police Emergency Management and Homeland Security Division for endpoint detection and response software. Approval recommended. Number five has been removed. Number six, consideration of declaring unclaimed property held by the Parking Services Department as surplus, so it may be auctioned for sale. Approval recommended. Seven, consideration of authorizing the termination and release of easements, which were acquired for the construction of the Orchard View Housing Development. Approval recommended.
Would any commissioner like any of the remaining consent calendar items polled? Seeing none, would anybody in the public like any of the consent items polled? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for a motion. Jackie, please.
I move that the consent calendar be adopted as read.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioners Anderson and Treadwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So now we'll start with our old business, which is the hybrid Ford interceptors. This has come up for a vote in the past, and so I'll let you take that for the quick update, Mr. Maritut.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Shamro. I just wanted to reiterate that at the October 20th City Commission meeting, Brandy Ekren, the Executive Director of Traverse City Light and Power, joined us and shared that she's going to assist the city in developing a fleet-wide strategy for electrifying our fleet. It's my genuine professional opinion that that is the best approach, rather than necessarily choosing vehicles that are electric that might not fit the particular purpose. And in this case, these are police patrol vehicles that, while we haven't had a situation happen where we've had to have our police travel very far so far for a mutual aid, we know even from this last weekend and from what happened at Walmart, that tragedies can happen even though they didn't happen before. And so I think it's very important that we have a fleet that is equipped to go a long distance if needed without any complications. This is a matter of public safety. I very much support and will champion electrifying our fleet to the fullest extent, and I'd like to do that through a fleet-wide strategy. And that's all that I've got.
Does anybody have any questions about this item, or would anybody like to make a motion?
General discussion?
General discussion comes after a motion, or if you have questions.
That's true.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jackie.
I move that...oh, see if I can read this. Garage vehicle 178, a 2011 Ford E250 be declared surplus, and that the interim city manager be authorized to issue a purchase order to Lunghammer Ford 44 Ford Hybrid Interceptors in the amount not to exceed $305,580, with funds available in the Garage Fund 661.
Support. Thank you, Commissioners Anderson and Shaw. And is there any discussion on this item? Go ahead, Commissioner Shaw.
Yeah, my research says that it's the cold weather that's the problem, that it seriously affects range and the heating of the car. It drains the battery as well. However, I did discover that the Toronto Police Service is testing a Chevrolet Blazer EV, and they're using it. It's pursuit-rated and fully-electric, and they're testing it to see how it works in real-world conditions, including a 12-hour shift. So maybe we keep our eyes on that.
Did you say that was Toronto, Canada?
Yes.
Okay.
Good research on that, yeah.
Commissioner Anderson?
I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate our interim city managers' approach to developing a strategic solution to this. Personally, I feel it's not a matter of whether our fleet is electrified, but when. And if current technology is not up to the demands that we currently experience, that doesn't mean that they may not be in the future.
Absolutely. Good. Excellent point. Go ahead, Mitch.
Yes, this is, I would say, a step in from...going from an internal combustion engine fleet to an electric fleet in the right direction. There...yes, there are models available, but they haven't been fully tested in all the scenarios that our department needs vehicles for. So we can be on the leading edge of some things, but I am glad that other agencies are in the trial phase so that we can benefit from their success and learn from their troubles. And just...yes, we don't have very long drives for most of our vehicles, but I can say personally that I've benefited from a mutual response that was into Wexford County during a blizzard. So thank you, Traverse City Police Department, for that.
Okay, go ahead.
So I think it's important to note that if this purchase is approved, it's a first step. It's not the end. And it's something that I think we need to continually reevaluate and look at. It's not the finish line. The goalpost is going to keep on moving, and that our goal is to electrify as much of the fleet as possible. I'm encouraged by the presentation that we heard from Ms. Ekren on October 20th. I liked her approach in terms of looking for those quick wins, and I think that the strategic, data-driven approach is really the best strategy.
A question I had really quick, and I think we've done this enough that I pretty well know, but our vehicles, especially for our police fleet, tend to be about four to five years, is my understanding, sometimes a little bit longer. And I only say this not because I need the exact number, but I think sometimes when we're making these purchases, as it been made, these are for a few years that we get a lot of wear and tear, especially police vehicles, I know, get a lot of wear and tear on them. And then we update the fleet, so...and update our vehicles. So as we...as has been made abundantly clear, I think from all of us, because we all agree on this, this is a first step, and we want to finish this process. But this isn't something that now we're stuck with hybrids for the next 15 years or something. These cars take more wear and tear than the average user, and so this is something that we'll be able to update with some frequency, judicious, but frequency too, so...all right, is there any other comment on this?
Just the question on what...and maybe Frank will speak to this when he talks here in a moment, in regard to the trade-in value of some of these vehicles, when we look at our turnover on these hybrid vehicles, are we getting a decent amount of resale for what we're trading them in for?
That's a good question.
I really can't...excuse me. Frank Deterrey, Director of Public Services, City of Traverse City. I can look into the exact numbers and percentages for it. I don't have the information at the moment. But I did want to respond to Commissioner Shaw's research, which it's wonderful that folks are really looking into these things. And we did too. In the comparison between the Ford Hybrid and the Chevy Blazer EV, the rear seats on the Chevy have exactly half the capacity of that of the Ford Hybrid. The trunk has less than half the capacity of the Ford Hybrid. And the carrying capacity for the Chevy Blazer is around 904 pounds compared to nearly 1,700 pounds for the Ford Hybrid. So it just serves the needs in so many other ways besides the discussion that we're heading towards to electrifying the fleet. In this case, this is certainly the best vehicle for the use of the police force. Just wanted to make sure that...we did look into that hybrid. Thanks for looking, too.
Well, maybe it's testing the battery.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, which is great.
It'll be valuable, one way or another.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a big part of the problem, we know. Thanks. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners at this time? Seeing none, any public comment on this item?
We ask that you state your name and address, indicate if you're a city resident, non-city resident, and/or city business owner. We have a three-minute time allotment per speaker. When your time has elapsed, the timer will beep. And finally, we request that all language be respectful to all parties.
Good evening. I'm Brian Fleetwood with Trigas at 1660 Barlow. I'm a non-resident of the city. I'd like to take this opportunity, as you consider purchasing four hybrid police cruisers, to speak about the benefits of propane auto gas and how it can reduce emissions and work into your citywide fleet strategy. Propane auto gas vehicles provide significantly lower greenhouse gas emissions, nitrogen oxides, and particulate matter than other engines. One option that would work well with police cruisers and other city vehicles is a propane gasoline bi-fuel system. A propane bi-fuel system allows the vehicle to operate on either gasoline or propane auto gas. A bi-fuel system would reduce emissions, integrate easily into the city's existing fleet, and offer increased range for full days and the longer mutual aid calls. If any commissioners that would like to explore auto gas as an option would like, the Michigan Propane Gas Association has a propane bi-fuel pickup truck that we'd be happy to arrange if you'd like to take a test drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Warner, 608 West 7th Street, city resident. Climate change is still real, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here to encourage you to make informed decisions. This information is the same as it was a year ago and prior to that, but especially a year ago, because the Michigan State Police approved the 2025 EV Blazer for use. They're not using it yet, but they put it through its basis and they've approved it, so it's not new information. Traverse City Light and Power Executive Director Brandy Ekren has talked to our Chief of Police a year ago. We have, you know, emails about those conversations. So that information needs to be shared with all of you so you can make informed decisions about what's going on. And it's not just Groundhog Day. This is the same conversation as a year ago. You, as individuals, need to make the informed decisions. You're better than this. It sounds good to the public. You ask good questions, but you don't have all the information. You need to ask for what information is available and what's being looked for. Mr. Deterrey likes to reference carrying capacity, et cetera, et cetera, but what's actually needed? It sounds like we can't even have one electric vehicle at this time, because they all might be called across state in an emergency, every single police vehicle for one emergency. We wouldn't leave a single one here in Traverse City. So ask some good questions. I expect it's going to pass tonight. But again, I'm not here to argue about climate change. I'm here to encourage you to make informed decisions. And when you don't know something, let Benjamin know ahead of time and make sure he provides the information needed to make that decision, or just tell him you're not ready to make that decision because he hasn't provided you with the information necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Any final comments from commissioners? Being done, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next on our agenda is the renewal of a pilot...oops, sorry, my screen just had something pop up on it, but for East Bay Flats, if I'm not mistaken, yes? All right, so I'll let you handle that, Benjamin.
Which I'm going to turn it right over to the city attorney, if that's okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I have a little frog in my throat. I'm going to speak into the microphone so Sarah doesn't get mad at me. So this is an item that came before the commission a couple of years ago for a pilot. Previously, this particular facility was owned and managed and run by the Housing Commission, and now it has been turned over to Goodwill, and it is going to...well, the folks from...the good folks from Goodwill are here tonight, so they are actually best to speak on exactly who's served by this facility. But it's just a renewal and reconfirmation of the pilot resolution that is necessary because the process has taken this long to get to closing and to get through the MISTHA process. And so nothing has changed since the commission first adopted this pilot. It's just a recommitment to the pilot, and if there are any questions about who are served by the pilot, I would suggest we ask Goodwill to address those. Do we have further questions about this?
I've been locked out of my email. I apologize. I'm trying to work with IT to get that resolved. But it was brought to my attention that Commissioner Shaw had some questions about that pilot that she shared with...
She's just raised her hand, too.
You were going to speak. I'm...thank you.
I was just confused by what...by the language in the executive summary. It was hard to...I didn't know what was being asked, because two years ago, we approved the 4% pilot for 15 years, but apparently, because they didn't get the funding, it didn't take place. So we're being asked to re...
Right. We're just reconfirming the original resolution that was approved two years ago.
Right.
Nothing in that resolution has changed.
So the last two years, they've been using the previous pilot, which is that 10%, and the tenants in the building are 60% and...no, 80% and below. So all of that is going to change. It's going to go to 60% and below AMI for the tenants when this takes effect, and the 4% pilot. So I was just confused what happened over the last two years.
Right.
You understand?
Yes, if...yeah, we've got Goodwill folks here. The other thing I will ask the folks from Goodwill to maybe address is the vouchers. Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Nora. I'm with Goodwill. It's Dan.
Dan, you're an executive director for Goodwill Northern Michigan. I'm a city resident, 242 East 9th Street.
Oh, I work in the city. So East Bay Flats, 440 Monson, 64 units. We purchased the...Goodwill purchased it in November 2023, that same day we came here to ask for a pilot. That April, we actually received a reservation for tax credits from MISTHA, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. And what that really did is it allowed us to start exploring doing the rehab that needs to be done on that property and provided a path towards 64 housing vouchers that would stay with the property for 15 years and then the opportunity to renew. So in the last two years, the pilot had a commencement on construction clause, the one that was issued, and we missed it by just a little bit. But it took a while to get the financing that we need and getting the partners for the tax credits. We are hopefully rolling, and we hopefully will, pending, you know, approval of everything, begin construction the first week of December. The units are fine themselves. It's just a little...it's a lot of cosmetic stuff, repairing some infrastructure, and getting it also to be much more efficient. It has some really old-school water boilers, so getting that done. But we're really excited about a path towards the vouchers. East Bay Flats is home for people who are...have experienced homelessness, are chronically homeless, are feeling domestic violence, or have special needs. If they were in the property when we purchased in 2023, it was...if they make 60% AMI or less, they're free to stay. Everyone who's moved in since is at 30% or less. So I thought that was important to call out just because there's a big difference between all that.
Would you mind just sharing what a voucher is, explaining that?
Okay, sure. So what we are getting from MISTHA is called a project-based voucher, which is a voucher that is not tenant-based. It stays with the unit. So the unit will have a voucher associated with it. The tenant, once they are put forward, will apply for the voucher and with property management. Everyone who's at East Bay Flats now and who will be there in the future had to sign a lease. They had to apply. They had to do a background check, and they had to work a little bit for it and work with our outreach team to get in. So that said, that's a new layer that'll be coming out hopefully Thursday, so we're very excited about that.
So every person pays up to...will pay up to 30% of their income? So if you look at the rental assistance, basically, it's about a half a million dollars in rental assistance that will be flowing through that project each year over the next 15 years. So it's actually...I mean, for the...for the city, it's been a great opportunity to get people who are not currently housed into housing situation. We just actually closed on the tax credits last Friday. And the part of the condition of that tax credit closing is this approval. So this is actually a very important vote that we able to be able to move forward with the project. So there's going to be $6 million in remodeling of the building this tax trust allows us to have. It also frees up or creates the 64 vouchers that will be available to people who are experiencing homelessness, fleeing domestic violence, or special needs for the next 15 years.
And what comes with those vouchers is rent restrictions. We have to stay within MISTHA's fair market rent. FMR is what it's called. So right now, we're charging $1,051 per a one-bedroom. That was 2023's FMR. 2026 FMR goes up to $1,056. So we are staying within those FMRs. So even though the client is also limited in what they can pay, we are also limited in what we can charge.
Do we have other questions? Go ahead, Jackie.
First, a comment. I was honored to be able to vote for the original pilot as one of my very first actions as a newly-hatched commissioner, so that was kind of a watershed moment. And I wanted to acknowledge and thank whoever prepared. I suspect it was our city treasurer, the analysis of what we're essentially subsidizing in terms of forgiven tax, property tax revenues. And I just wanted to be sure, because it was reported on an annual basis, I think, and I wanted to be sure that over...I'm doing this right, over the 15-year period of the pilot, that it adds up to roughly $2.5 million in forgiven property taxes from the city? Is that... Yeah, 170,000 per year, something like that. Okay, great. Oh, so it may...it may float.
Our treasurer is not Mike. So I'll just say her comment, just so the people at home know, is...or people who can't hear, that this...it will fluctuate slightly based on rents, but approximately this 170,000, and the limitations on what rents can be, as was just explained by Goodwill, will average to about that.
Great. Thank you for the analysis, and thank you for verifying my back-of-the-envelope calculations. Appreciate it.
Do we have other questions, or would somebody like to make a motion?
Were you getting the $6 million for the renovations in the...
Because that's part of the tax credits. That's what we're...the financing that we were waiting on to close on. It's kind of a complicated process. Basically, we get awarded a certain amount of tax credits, and those get sold on the market. You need an equity investor to actually purchase those tax credits. It took a long time to get it. The market's pretty...for anyone who's in the tax credit world, it's a pretty complicated situation. So the market wasn't very strong. It took a long time for us to find an equity investor. So that creates the money for remodeling. You put that money into the project that's been pre-approved by MISTHA.
So you had met...you mentioned that there were some infrastructure costs related to the boiler system, so some mechanical stuff?
And that'll be covered through the $6 million.
Yep, and then like cosmetic to make it look nicer?
The wind dills will be replaced. A lot of the HVAC systems will be taken out. They're like a pack system. A light...a lot of issues around lighting, and then a lot of the way it looks on the outside. We didn't bring pictures, but if you've seen the building, it needs a little bit of love.
I don't know if you remember me, but I was at a neighborhood association meeting back in October, and you came and gave a presentation for the Oakwood Triangle neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And I was there for that, and there was a lot of other things that we discussed, but one of the things that you had mentioned was that there's plans to build a community room.
Correct.
Is that going to be part of that $6 million renovation?
That's correct, yes.
Like, how many square feet is that going to add to the whole project and the building?
2,103.
Approximately?
She's ready.
So right now, there are 67 units, and so that will knock out three units for the community room, plus also case management offices as well. So we have three case managers that are on-site at the building to provide support for the individuals who are staying there.
I'm not giving you...I'm not asking these questions to give you a hard time, because this is a really vulnerable population in our community that we're talking about. They...if they weren't there, they were in the pines before. So I mean, it's...it is like...I'm happy that we have this compassionate option for them, but the whole thing that I'm looking at is we have $6 million for renovation on this, and we're going to forego $2.5 million of tax money for the next 15 years that we could be building roads and sidewalks and stormwater sewer infrastructure, and all the things that we ran as commissioner candidates for, and we talked about these things as a need for our community. And right now, we're looking at offering this to you, which, I mean, I'm torn a little bit.
I would add that's also a half a million dollars in rental assistance each year. And if you look at the future value of a dollar, $6 million today is more...
Costs more tomorrow than it does today. I get that completely.
And just to clarify, and I know you're not saying this, but just to clarify, the $6 million comes from MISTHA and other funding. The two and a half is over 15 years from the city. So it's 170,000 approximately a year from the city.
Every year.
So yes, it's a big number total, but I just wanted to make that clear to people that it's... that it's, we're not sitting down and writing a $2 million check to everybody, nor are we writing a $6 million check.
But I mean, over the life of this pilot, we're going to not collect $2.5 million. And that property is a considerable consumer of tax services. Hey, Heidi?
Hi, Heidi Sheppi, City Treasurer. I just want to highlight, though, of that collection, that is in total of all millages, so distributed across just the city millages, it's significantly less, it's about 75,000 for the 15 years.
Total for the 15 years?
Correct.
Of city taxes that they're not paying?
Back of the napkin, I can verify with an email, but it is significant, it's the, just the city portion, because it's distributed through all of the millages.
I mean, it's a complex process to get these vouchers and apply for this funding and sell all that stuff.
This is just the pilot payment, this has nothing to do with the voucher. This is the pilot that we collect, we have to collect it, distribute it proportionally across all millages, of that, the annual amount is approximately $5,000 that the city gets to keep. So times 15, again, I've got the numbers roughly.
And we'll work to make that more clear in the future, because it just generically says taxes, so you could make the presumption it's solely city taxes, but-
It's a good point.
It's the full tax bill.
Yeah, so I mean, you were grant, you were giving up taxes for all taxing jurisdictions by what you're doing here, but what hits the city coffers in the general fund is significantly less than the total.
You're saying about, back of the napkin was about $75,000 a year?
In total.
In total, over $75,000 for 15 years?
That is what we will be collecting. So I can, I can run those numbers to give you the difference between the two points. That's what, 75,000 is what we'll be collecting as opposed to, I can get your number. Was not prepared for this, so.
I was gonna say, I think because it's back of the napkin, and I know Ken's not intending to make this-
Well, I mean, when any person in the general public is going to read this, what's on this agenda for us tonight, they're going to do the same math I did, and they're going to say, this is $170,000 per year that we're not collecting, 15 years, 2.5 million.
Yeah, 75 is what we're collecting, I can run those, I can calculate it real quick.
It's not that important. I just, I just, we're just, I like the napkin math.
Okay, Mitch, go ahead.
But if we're doing napkin math, each of these people, that was potentially somebody that would be in the pines or under the bridge, I'm not saying there are no calls to police to East Bay Flats or to fire, but there's many fewer proportionate than if those people were unhoused. And I'm sure you can speak to your experience as a firefighter, the added cost to the city of a call and requiring fire department response out there.
Yeah, I debated whether or not it would be pertinent to run the call volume numbers, but I didn't want to ask staff to do something I did off that I could do myself. So, but I know they're available, and it's something we could look at, but it was suggested that the police response there is considerable. And I can speak from the fire response and say that it is a frequent location. It doesn't take away the value of the importance of this, having this type of housing available in our community. But I think that we need to have a good conversation about the value, because this is not a incredibly welcome thing, you know, housing in our neighborhood, but it serves a value, so I think it's worthy of discussion.
Well, and can I thank you, because I, I mean, I see the general number too, and when I think about, I forget that that is dispersed amongst other taxing authorities, who also then, the other side of that coin is also, also then incur costs based on this, the jail, the county sheriff, the county courts, and other service providers that are part of some of our millages as well. So that's, I mean, it's an interesting point for us to get down to our numbers and have that bigger conversation, but also how that's not all coming from us, but the other jurisdictions it's coming from are also affected by, if there's not housing or other things available for people. Yeah, go ahead, Jackie.
Just a suggestion that maybe we should bake this conversation into our upcoming budget discussions, where if we were proactively saying, yes, as a community, we would like to support the, this type of housing with X dollars of, you know, tax abatement, then, then we know what pool of money we have intentionally allocated and can look at it from an umbrella perspective, rather than just a case-by-case situation.
I think it's a good general discussion to have in regard to our pilot process as a whole, because, you know, when we do decide to approve a pilot, that is tax dollars that we are not collecting anymore, and there is a need for those. And it just seems like pilots aren't not approved. Everything is worthy, right? I mean, everything has some value to it, and we can discuss it, and we can talk about it, and we can come to consensus as a commission. We were, we, we bring a lot of perspective to this, to this commission from where we live in the community and how we operate. So it's a bigger, bigger discussion about pilots, I think, as a whole.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, by Commissioner Anderson to put it in our budget. Go ahead, Lauren.
I just have a teeny bit of background information. So the first thing is, pilots often get approved by this body. And then I think people have the perspective that maybe those are automatically going to affect. What happens is they go, in most cases, unless it's a workforce housing, they go to MISTDA for a whole nother process of usually competitive funding. And they're not all funded by MISTDA. So it might seem sometimes to the public, like, oh, we have all these pilot resolutions that always keep getting adopted, and we're giving all these pilots away. And that's not the end of the story, really, it's the, it's the beginning of the story for the life of a pilot. We should have like that, I was the bill on Capitol Hill thing, pilots, because it's really confusing. But, so oftentimes, they don't get funded by MISTDA. So it just, it seems maybe like, oh, we have all these pilots, but they, they don't really come to fruition. That's the first thing.
And then we have to resubmit the next year, and the board has to approve.
Right.
Yeah, sometimes.
The other thing is, and I think this is a really good thought, that you just sparked my memory, Ken, when you said this, is that when we went through the pilot policy a couple of years ago, and the commission adopted that policy, there was discussion about keeping track of all the pilots that do come to fruition, and having a number, sort of a threshold in mind of, when is enough, when is it enough, or when is it too much? So I think that's something, maybe it's really good to start thinking about that in the budget, and then revisiting, what is the, what is this commission's, now you're a new commission, what is this commission's appetite for how much of the budget to apply to pilots, if I can put it that way? So, just a little bit of background.
Oh, hold on just one moment, before we get too far, much further down, and have a general discussion about pilots that we are going to be moving to another night, are there more questions about this, or can we have a motion? Because we actually don't have a motion yet. Thank you, Jackie.
I'll make a motion. I move that the renewed and reconfirmed resolution granting tax exemption for the property at 440 Monson Avenue to Goodwill Northern Michigan be adopted.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners Anderson and Tredwell. All right, now we can keep opening, I just wanted to not forget that and have a vote on something that wasn't actually made. Do we have other questions or comments?
I'm inclined to support this, simply because of the fact that this was an agreement made before I became a commissioner, and I believe that we should, we'll hold ourselves to that standard that was set before us, so I'm comfortable with it in that aspect, but I'm-
Have questions?
Yeah.
Great.
Yep.
Others? Seeing none right now, open, is there any public comment on this item? Going once. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, and added discussion for the budget process, thank you. Next is our consideration of authorizing agreement regarding water with Grand Teveras Commons, and I will hand that off to Lauren.
Okay. So this is an item that has been sort of in percolating, I guess you can say, for quite some time. The, I think we have a map in your packet, as well as some projections, which we could, may or may not need to talk to you through. But what, the genesis of this was, if the commissioners that were here at the time might remember, is, was a request from the Barnes project, that they were trying to get some additional water pressure for the renovation they were doing of the additional barn. And that led to a broader discussion of this entire district over by the commons and including the Barnes, that has been not very well-served by water pressure historically. And so, at the time, the engineers got together, both from Garfield and from the city, and discussed what options there would be to improve water pressure and quality in this area. That came before the city commission, I think there were three options, and the city commission decided to go with the option of bringing the water up through Garfield's system, up to the water tower, and then that would pressure, feed the pressure back down into the commons by gravity. And so, we went forward as a team with the township, and had that, that project designed, and ultimately built with funding by the Brownfield. And so that project is nearly finished now. They've tested the water pressure, and turned it on, and tested it in all of the buildings, and I'm told it's going really well. And that the Barnes have pressure more than double what they had before. So this is for, this is really important for fire flow. That was a really important factor in this, not just for the Barnes, but for the whole district, which has been lacking. And so, part of what that process was, was we were trying to decide, once this project was implemented, what would be the best way operationally to move forward? Would it be better for the township to take on that water pressure district and maintain and operate that going forward, or the city? There are different, there are different pockets and areas where this is the case on the edge of the city, because the water doesn't have a boundary, right? And the system, water systems have to loop and flow, and that doesn't really respect a boundary of a municipality. And so, we sat down over several months with the team, city staff, township staff, DPW staff, and really vetted out what the best path forward would be for ownership, operation, and maintenance of this district going forward. And we all came to the conclusion that it would be the best approach to have the township take on this district and take over those opportunities and responsibilities going forward. And so, what we have agreed to as a team in concept is an agreement going forward with Garfield, where Garfield will purchase the infrastructure that is in the ground, over at the commons, at a depreciated rate, and we can get into really fine details on that. But our staff went down to every pipe, what size it is, how old it is, and all of those infrastructure elements to come up with that number. That Garfield would reimburse the city for an amount up to $48,000 for financing the project. Brownfield is going to pay the city back for building it, but the city had to front the money for the project. So it's that, that interest type of opportunity cost that we calculated. Garfield will take over ownership and maintenance and operation of this district once the Brownfield has reimbursed the city, so that would be the trigger for that. That during this transition period, the city will continue to bill and will have a status quo until that transition takes place. And then, after that, any new connections in this district would be township clients or customers for water, not for sewer. Sewer, then DPW is going to take on the billing for this district for a very small fee. And they're going to bill the customers for water on behalf of Garfield, and then bill the customers for sewer on behalf of the city and remit the sewer back to the city. So that is basically the outline of the agreement. And so we're bringing this to you now, and it'll go to Garfield at their next meeting. And this is the recommendation of the team, is to approve this agreement.
Do we have questions? Go ahead, Laura.
I have a comment. So I think it's important that I disclose that I sit on the recreational authority board of directors, and as its chair, that's a volunteer, city-appointed representative, but I want, I want the public to know that, because the rec authority actually owns and manages Historic Barnes Park, where we're having those water pressure issues. And Historic Barnes Park is within that proposed new water pressure district. And the park, along with many other customers, will benefit from improved water pressure and the additional infrastructure that we're adding. I did meet with the city attorney on this issue, and it doesn't represent a conflict. I have no financial gain from it, there is no contractual conflicts or benefits, and the issue at hand relates to all of the customers within the district, and not just the rec authority, but I wanted to acknowledge then and disclose that for the group and my fellow commissioners.
And the city has a seat on that board as well, that's appointed.
Yes, I'm the city representative. Ken Funk is, and Ken Funk is the new city commission representative.
Well, you're the, you're a city citizen.
Correct.
Ken is our city representative, city commission representative, yes. So Mitch, well, we're not getting, Mitch, you have a question? I don't want to get into commentary unless people object for some reason. Otherwise, I'd like us to have questions or have a motion, so we can have it. Go ahead, Jackie.
Okay.
Thank you. A thank you first, for the estimates of the impact on small families, medium families, and commercial clients. That was very helpful to me in coming to a conclusion. I am a bit wondering about the impact on some larger commercial ratepayers for the pressure district. I'm sensitive to the fact that breweries, for instance, are a big, heavy users. And I'm just wondering if, in the analysis, there was any discussion about how those folks would be impacted by the rates?
I think that that, the rates are all the same for commercial and regular users, so you, it extrapolates out.
So it's just simply direct extrapolation of the amount that they use?
Right, I think that that is something that I think we could have had more discussion with the, with the clients over there. But at the end of the day, when you look at a water rate, you, we would be paying either to transmit that water through Garfield and back down through the tower, which the city would pay an extra transmission fee for, or those customers would be paying Garfield the increased rate to, for, basically for that transmission fee. So it's sort of like, pay me now or pay me later, because that water has to get there. The, the other thing, I just have to say, is that when you're looking at utility rates, it's not a profit-generating proposition. So utility rates have to relate to, how much does it cost to provide that utility? And it's, and, and of course, there's, there's, there's some extra on top to make that system work and maintain and operate that system going forward. But it's not, there's no windfall within that calculation, or there shouldn't be, otherwise-
We're in violation.
We're all going to get in trouble for it, because that's not what it's meant for. So I don't know if that really answers your question, but-
Somewhat, and I appreciate the commentary about no windfalls here. Is there a process in place where anyone who feels that, that this is an extreme burden to their commercial operations, that they would be able to express that or ask for action?
I'm not aware of that, as I sit here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, and I would just say, to your point, if someone suddenly becomes aware of it, this also has to get approved at Garfield Township. So there, it would be another public body that has to vote on it as well to make it. So there's another opportunity, if someone missed it here, to see when Garfield Township meets and show up there as well. Just, that's a good point, Trace, so.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Mitch, and then Laura?
I understand that this is a water district that straddles the city and township lines, and it makes sense to have a unified, to treat it as a unified district that is under one jurisdiction's administrative authority. But why was it ultimately decided to put it under Garfield Township rather than the city?
We spent a lot of time running numbers, and by we, I don't mean me, because that would not work out well. But our Krieger and Heidi Sheppi and Jana all went through these numbers and ran the scenarios each separate way. And really, what it came down to was, this was the most financially beneficial to the city, and this made the most sense operationally, to make sure that it, that the billing would be one bill for water and sewer to the customers, to try and make it easy for them. And that DPW would also be administering that, so that would be easier for the customers. And the numbers just came out to make, you know, this our recommendation from staff.
Thank you, that makes sense, and Laura?
I was just gonna say, Laura, go ahead.
So I have two questions, Lauren. One is, I saw in the packet that the split of customers is approximately 50% city and 50% Garfield. Do we understand what the split is between commercial and residential customers?
Right, so the answer that I got from the treasurer's office when I asked them that is that it's almost all commercial. But the reason is that some of the condo associations are one meter, and so those are- And so those are just listed as a commercial, even though they're residential condos. Um, but the rates are the, the same. So as a dollars and cents proposition, it doesn't change the bottom line. But that's how they're treated as, as a commercial, because it's one big, like condo association.
Okay, that makes sense. And then the second question, it piggybacks on, I think on Jackie's comment, is do we have a communication strategy yet for those customers that will be impacted, commercial or residential, so that they understand what's coming?
Yes, we have talked about that, um, in, with the team and including, uh, the DPW team that will be doing the billing and both the township and the, um, the city's teams and, um, along with our communications, um, specialists. So we will be working on that to make sure that folks know what to expect.
I think that's super important, and I guess I'd just like to commend the entire team. I think that this regional approach is really a model of how we can look at many complex issues, um, for the city. And the, the creative approach and, and the financing approach, I think, has been really important. And, and I commend the team for addressing this situation. It's been really important to the barns for a long time.
Thank you. And I will just say one other thing. The, the actual transition, it is not imminent. It'll be, we have to wait until the Brownfield pays back the city. So there's some time to, um, make sure that that communication, um, is handled.
About how long is the transition?
Um, it'll be, it'll be about a year, because that's when the Brownfield recapture will happen.
Okay, thank you.
So there's some time for that.
Ken, and then Heather, I did see your hand up too.
I just kind of wanted to piggyback on what Mitch had said, and it's just kind of confusing. These, we're turning over the authorities to Garfield Township, but they're still going to get a sewer bill from the city and a water bill from Garfield Township. Okay. That's the clarification I needed. I know it wasn't that much, but.
Yeah.
And we're retaining, of course, ownership of that sewer system.
Right.
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 Heather?
So when you talk about running the numbers and finding out what's financially beneficial to the city, um, maybe, maybe Heidi could make clear what that, um, number six in this, this list of things is? That, that the, uh, if the, if Garfield were to construct a separate water treatment plant after this contract is executed, the district will revert to the city and all its customers shall become city water customers. So that, uh, the answer I got was, was that this was financially beneficial to the city. Perhaps you could explain that.
So, so yeah, when we run the numbers, we're, we're running the numbers, the plant, if, if the city keeps the operations versus the city turns over the water operations to Garfield. The city is, um, only giving up the difference between the wholesale cost, because we're going to still continue to sell the water to Garfield Township. So the only thing the city is giving up is the difference between the hotel, wholesale and the retail cost. And so that, along with the infrastructure purchase from Garfield Township, actually gives us a windfall in that first year to help offset those losses. But if, in fact, we weren't, um, selling that wholesale water to Garfield, if Garfield were to have their own plant, that's a whole nother, that would, this loss would be significantly more.
Interesting.
So that provision's baked into the agreement for that reason.
And you're confident that Garfield is going to, is, is, will accept this?
They've agreed to it. I mean, their board needs to approve it, of course, but they had a team representing Garfield Township, just like the city had one, uh, as well.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. And the township supervisor who votes on the board and the township manager were part of that team.
Right. Do we have other questions or a motion?
Oh, it's all right. I move that the mayor and interim city clerk be authorized to execute an agreement with Garfield Township as outlined in the packet materials in the November seventeen twenty twenty-seven commission meeting. And any additional documents necessary to implement the transfer of the Barnes Commons Water Service District to Garfield Township, such agreement and documents subject to approval as to substance by the interim city manager and as to form by the city attorney.
Support. Thank you, Commissioners Treadwell and Mayor Pro Tem Ness. Any further discussion on this? Any public comment on this item?
Hi, Raymond Minervini with the Minervini Group, eight thirty Cottage View Drive. Um, kudos to the staff and engineers and the contractors for the work that was done. Uh, we had the, the comments site had been torn up for several weeks. And, uh, most, all of the restoration is done. It looks like a fine job all around. Um, I'm here, uh, asking to pause on this only because for the last year, we were assured that this, uh, work would only have little or no impact financially or on the rates being charged to the people in the district. And we found out the week of this, of last week's packet, that there was a twenty percent increase in the water rates, uh, as a result of this, uh, agreement. If nothing else, we'd just like the courtesy of showing the math, because I have a lot of other people I'm standing on behalf of. Um, for one, Cordia is going to see probably twenty, or twelve to thirteen thousand dollar annual increase in their water bill, uh, due to that commercial account. Um, and of course, it goes on besides the brewery, the winery, et cetera. Um, we just would have liked to have been part of that discussion and so we can understand, um, the decisions that are being made and then be heard perhaps to consider, uh, you know, how the math is being done and make sure it's not being unduly shouldered by the water customers at the commons. So that's my request. It may not change the math. Um, I know good people are crunching some good numbers, but we weren't part of that. We weren't privy to any aspect of that, so, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item? Bring it back. Is there any further comment from the commission? Go ahead, Heather.
Well, I'd like to respect that. I asked to pause this for a bit. I think that sounds reasonable. They weren't part of the conversation. It is, you know, a twelve to thirteen thousand dollar, uh, increase in, well, water bill for Cordia is significant. Um, and we can pause this for a bit, right?
Well, the, the motion's on the floor, but we can vote no on it if people want to, and, and that would delay, and we could bring it back then. Um, a question on procedure. Is this something that if it gets voted down, it would have to wait six months to come back? Or how does that work if it gets voted down now, but wouldn't it be brought back?
If it's voted, if it's, if it fails, then it would have to wait unless one person that voted against it.
If it fails on a four-three, that rule does not apply.
Okay. So if it fails four-three, it can be brought time? Well, okay.
But if it fails completely, then one person who voted no.
Can bring it back.
Can bring it back. That's, yeah.
Okay.
How long do we have to wait to bring it back?
If, if it, somebody who votes no wants to bring it back and come back?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. If it's not, then it has to wait like six months, right? Isn't there something, or?
Yeah.
It depends on how the vote goes. There's only six commissioners here tonight, so it's probably, that rule isn't going to apply either way, but.
Okay.
So how will the, uh, how does that impact the presentation of this issue to Garfield Township? It would just simultaneously delay that? Or would Garfield Township hear this then before us?
Uh, it, it could go either way. They could still proceed, um, at their next meeting if they wish to do so, um, but they may wish to delay. I, we'll, we'll have to talk about that with them.
Does, does this vote have to happen before the Brownfield funds can be returned?
No.
No, so we could wait to see that money comes back, and then when we vote on it, it can be the transfer of ownership?
Uh, I wouldn't suggest that we wait that long.
Process doesn't move that fast.
Yeah, we, when the commission approved the, I know you weren't on the commission then, but just so you know what, the city agreed to. City commission approved an agreement, uh, to do the work to bring the pressure to that district and said that we would work in good faith to negotiate with Garfield Township. I think that if we waited that long, that, I mean, I'm, Lauren could weigh in, that doesn't feel like good faith to me.
Yeah.
It's not saying you have to approve it. It's saying that you can't drag your feet that long. Not that you're dragging your feet, but you can't delay a decision for that long of a time. I don't think that's a good negotiating partner.
That sounds fine to not wait that long. I was just wondering if that was an available option. It doesn't sound like that. I want to be good, responsible partners with our neighbors, especially Garfield Township. They waited for a long time on this.
Um, we, we, the, the question right now is, would we vote for it now or later? It can even be brought back. It's not necessarily waiting a year. It could be two weeks. So, um, we'll see what, we'll, we can see where that would lead us based on the vote, but, right?
If we wait to review the numbers and present them in a different way, that it still doesn't change the outcome of what this numbers are going to be, that these commercial customers are going to be, you know, receive a substantial increase in their fees, are we still gonna, like, we showed the numbers as requested, and it still says, you're going to pay a lot more in water for this. Are we still going to vote yes or no at that point?
Yeah, I think the question is, what Commissioner Shaw brought up was to give them time as a courtesy, not that this would, we don't think that the cost will be distributed. We just did this as the city with rates not too long ago as well.
And you never know, you know, you get more people into the conversation, you may find something that helps out with those rates.
Um, I was just going to say, if the motion, if the motion maker and the seconder, uh, would agree, you could just change the motion to refer it to the next meeting, and then that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, so, or, sorry, really quick. This, now we're getting to Robert's rule, so pause for a moment. And, um, or would it be that they would just rescind the motion and we would have a new motion?
You could do it that way, too.
So Commissioners Treadwell and Ness made the motion. Do you want, do either of you want to rescind the motion or the second? And then we could, that would go away, we could refer it to the next meeting? Or would you like to have the vote on it? And it starts with you, Commissioner Treadwell, because you made the motion, and then I'd get Ness, so.
I'm fine with the motion on the table.
Commissioner Ness, do you want to keep your, your second?
I can rescind my second.
Okay. Do we have a sec, a new second? It won't say a second, second.
I second.
Okay. So now it is Treadwell and Anderson. And I am going to call the vote then. So this is on the original motion that the mayor and interim city clerk authorized agreement with, uh, Garfield Township as outlined on November seventeenth, so that, as it was in the packet. So we're going to call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Funk?
Nay.
Mayor Pro Tem Ness?
Nay.
Mayor? Yes. So motion fails.
Can be brought back anytime.
So it can be brought back at any time because of the count.
Yep.
So that failed for tonight, but that can be brought back at any time without a special request by commissioners. Of course, I think if a commissioner that voted no were to indicate some support, that would help. But we understand too that the mo, this is primarily so that more notification could be given. So I'm sure staff has got that clear from this conversation. Okay, so we will now move on to item number four, which is, uh, the Fish Pass update. I requested the eight-bit video, but I don't know if we're going to get that tonight. So I'll let Frank take it away.
Good evening. Frank Teteri, Director of Public Services for the city of Travis City. I'll introduce Dan Leah here in a second. I just wanted to remind everyone, uh, here of the wonderful project that we've been fortunate to have on the artery that flows right through the middle of our city. This project has been, was signed on by the, the city and county in two thousand nine through an MOA that saw the, the, both the city and the, and the county would be dedicated to the decision of the Boardman Dan's, uh, team, Boardman Dan's committee to complete the project. And here we are in the last phase of the project. And, uh, the hundreds of people that, that dedicated, uh, quite a bit of time and effort, all the NGOs, all the, uh, preceding commissions, tribal councils, uh, the, the city commission, the, the Grand Travis County Commission, and the tribal councils have supported this unanimously since it's been, since its inception. The, uh, it's, it's an amazing product, uh, project, and we're just so fortunate to have the partners that we have. And, uh, since two thousand sixteen, which is when the, uh, city first, uh, uh, became a partner with the, with the Great Lakes Fisher Commission for the Fish Pass project, uh, nine years has gone by. And we're, uh, on the doorstep of, of, uh, construction. You can see it happening right in our town. So I just wanted to take this chance to acknowledge all the folks that had a lot of work that were involved in, in the project, uh, the Boardman Ottawa River project, uh, to get us to where we are. And I'll introduce Dan Zalinski and Leah McCallum for the Great Lakes Fisher Commission. Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction, Frank. I've just got some short slides here to go over. And because of, uh, having some new commissioners, I have a, a brief kind of reintroduction to the project on, on the origin, what, what the pro, what the, uh, kind of mission is with Fish Pass and, and why it's important for the Boardman Ottawa River. And then I'll give a, an update on where the construction process is today. Um, so a, as Frank mentioned, um, really increasing connectivity in our rivers is, is really the emphasis of this project. Uh, Fish Pass was formulated by the Great Lakes Fisher Commission as a need to solve what we coined the connectivity conundrum. And this is the issue facing resource managers around fragmented watersheds. So when you have dams and barriers on watersheds, those barriers impede the movement of fish that need to be able to move between lakes and rivers or within rivers to complete their life history. Um, within the Great Lakes, there's a network of over two hundred and fifty thousand barriers that block the movement of approximately two hundred and twenty different fish species that have migratory movements within rivers or between rivers and the Great Lakes. Um, so this is not just focused on a solution for the Boardman Ottawa River, but one that's, can be broadly applied to others' rivers throughout the Great Lakes and around the world. Um, and this connectivity conundrum is really, what do we do with barriers? Do you remove a barrier to increase connectivity? Um, uh, or in the case when you have invasive species present, and those barriers serve a dual purpose of blocking that, the spread of that invasive species, do you retain the barrier for invasive species control? Uh, when we're talking about the invasive species for the Great Lakes and is key to Fish Pass, we're talking about the invasive sea lamprey. Uh, this is a species that, once it gained access to the Great Lakes, contributed to the near collapse of Lake Whitefish and Lake Trout populations, uh, in the Great Lakes. And the Great Lakes Fisher Commission coordinates a control program for sea lamprey that relies on, uh, barriers to prevent, uh, adult lamprey from leaving the Great Lakes and moving into tributaries to be able to spawn, as well as chemical lamparicides, which are nearly species-specific chemicals that are applied to areas where lamprey are able to reproduce. And it kills their lamprey, or their larvae that are present in the, in, in tributaries. Uh, and while combined, these two, uh, control mechanisms do have reduced sea lamprey populations to less than ninety percent of their historic peak. Uh, it does require constant effort in maintaining barriers and applying chemicals. Um, but these barriers also have the unintended consequence of blocking a lot of our native species. So the commission is committed to maintaining control of sea lamprey, but trying to, uh, improve access to the, that habitat for those other species that, uh, are native to the Great Lakes and never evolved to have a need to be able to jump over barriers, uh, like we see with, like introduced some on its, in our watersheds. Um, so that was kind of the impetus for why we proceeded with the Fish Pass project. Uh, and essentially what it, what the goal is, is to be able to provide, develop solutions to be able to provide up and downstream passage of desirable fish, while simultaneously blocking and or removing those that are undesirable. Uh, and this project is taking place at the former site of the Union Street Dam, which was the last dam on, uh, left to be modified as part of the Boardman River Restoration Project. Um, you know, and, and it's important for this, this site, because, uh, although the removal of the three upstream dams greatly improved connectivity within the, within the Boardman Ottawa River, uh, it does leave the system vulnerable to access from, uh, invasive sea lamprey, because instead of a system that had four redundant barriers, it's now just left with one. Um, so, well, Fish Pass provides an opportunity for us to develop solutions that can be applied at the Boardman Ottawa River, as well as around the Great Lakes. It also provides a solution to be able to provide that final cut, stage of connectivity between Lake Michigan and the Boardman Ottawa River and all that newly restored stretches upstream. So when we look at what Fish Pass will be once construction is completed, uh, I just want to emphasize a, a couple of the main features here. The first one is at the bottom of your screen, this is the Fish Sorting Channel. This is the primary site for research and development that will, uh, come up with these solutions for selective fish passage. It's a four-hundred-foot-long, thirty-foot-wide flume that was designed for adaptability in mind, so we can put in a lot of different tools and technologies rapidly and working with fish that are naturally moving through the river. Um, on the other side of the river is the Nature Lake Bypass Channel. Uh, this is designed to mimic a lot of the restored stretches you see upstream. So it has vegetated shorelines, it has in-stream habitat in terms of, uh, riffle habitat, as well as engineered log jams. Uh, and at, at the upstream end of that, we have a new water control structure. So this is the new Union Street Dam. This is an arc labyrinth spillway. Uh, it's that corrugated shape on the left. That's, if you ever walk by the site, that's kind of the prominent feature. Um, this was designed to provide all the regulatory flood capacity of the site, as well as do so very safely, so it doesn't create dangerous conditions downstream. Um, and this bifurcated channel design also permits the dual recreational use and scientific, uh, use of the site. And then we have a lot of other upland features that includes rain gardens, educational opportunities, and increased access across the site, through the site, to the river and, and across the dam in terms of a dedicated kayak slide to be able to enhance passage at the site. And then, but ultimately at the, in its baseline condition, this is a new barrier that has the opportunity for selective passage capabilities. So the, you know, with Fish Pass, you know, as all good science should, it started with a question. That question was really how to sort an assortment of things. In this case, our, our things, our living animals that can make decisions, they have their own volition, they can move on their own. So it makes our question and the answer to that infinitely more complex. But ultimately, the project still started with that question. And for inspiration on how to proceed with developing solutions for selective fish passage, we actually looked towards industry for examples. In this case, it was the single stream recycling industry, which, if you think about it, has very, very similar outcomes or goals in mind in which you can sort through an assortment of different materials so that you end up with the end a, a very refined collection of desirable materials while you're keeping out all, all those things that are undesirable. In this case, we want to be able to do that same thing with fish. But what we want to export from that is, is really two things. One is the use of automation. So this, in the case of fish sorting, this means moving away from manual trap and sort operations, which mean you have to have your hands on a fish, identify it, be able to move it. As you can imagine, that is very time-consuming, labor-intensive, and can be very stressful for fish, so it's not really a long-term solution. And then also relying on attribute-driven sorting. In the case of material cycling, this means instead of sorting paper because it's paper, cardboard because it's cardboard, it's, you're sorting this whole assortment of materials based on size, shape, density, color, whether it's magnetic. It, it's responsive like jets of air to effectively sort out everything all at the same time. In the case of fish sorting, this relies on sorting fishes based on their commonalities or differences in some of their attributes. And when I talk about those attributes, we're really relying on these kind of four main categories. First is phenology. So this is the runtime of fish. We know that fish move into river systems at different times of year, different times of day. And that's driven by changes in the environment, whether that's increased flow, changes in temperature, or just different times of, of year. And by understanding that, we know that fish essentially kind of can sort themselves just based on their natural behaviors. And this is already used in some seasonal barriers throughout the Great Lakes. But because sea lamprey tend to run at the exact same time as a lot of our native fish, it's not a universal solution. So then we look at morphology. This is size and shape of fish, or their coloration, eye position, fin shape. And this calls in the idea of using screens or traps to be able to affect, sort out fish based on their size, or using tools like image recognition to be able to identify more minute differences in fish. And we have a lot of research ongoing with image recognition with some industry and, and university partners. So that has a lot of promise. Next is behavior. This is obviously the most distinctive attribute for fish that differs from material cycling because they can respond to their environment. They can respond to cues that we can put in the water, whether that's changes in light, sound, presence of bubbles, changes in levels of turbulence, or velocity profiles, where the flow is going, or the introduction of naturally occurring chemicals and pheromones that fish respond to in an es, in, in an effort to have fish sort themselves effectively. And then finally, we have physiology, which in this case is really their ability to overcome a significant challenge, whether that's swimming at high speed, jumping over a barrier, or in the case of sea lamprey, in the lower right-hand corner is an eel-style ladder trap, which is essentially a wetted studded ramp that they can traverse and is actually incorporated into some sea lamprey traps throughout the Great Lakes. So as you can see, we have a lot of different technologies that we, we already know of. In fact, we, we're going through a study and look where we're trying to evaluate the known efficacy of what these tools are. And it's a list of about 18 different tools that have a lot of different settings. So we have a lot of options that are in play here. And what we're working on now is identifying what the best configuration of those tools are to start with. And then effectively, through an adaptive management process, once construction is done, be able to start with our best configuration of tools and then being able to evaluate, assess, make modifications, and learn each year successfully to eventually at the end of our research and optimization period, have a effective solution where we'll be able to provide passage of desirable species while blocking of undesirable species and supports the, the fish community goals of the Boardman Ottawa River. And then here's just a conceptual video showing what that process might look like. And you can see here, you know, we might start by sorting fish based on their size, using image recognition to be able to trigger things like gates or traps to be able to open, provide passage or block passage. Might sort fish based on their swimming ability or leaping ability. And then we have their response to environmental cues, whether that be bubbles, sound, light, or separating fish based on preferences of where they swim in the water column. For example, things like sea lamprey tend to stay towards the bottom. And then pairing those with traps or other collection devices to be able to effectively either remove, just return to the lower river, or allow fish passage upstream, depending on what that species is. So moving kind of past the, the background to where we're, where we're at with the project, you can see here that this idea started back in about 2014 when we were able to get funding from the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative to kind of start the idea of designing what this facility would need to encapsulate, to be able to find a solution. We've gone through that design process. We're just about to go to construction when we had the unfortunate legal delay, but construction was able to restart in 2024, which puts us right now at essentially about halfway through construction. Kind of focusing a little bit more in just the construction. I'm happy to report that our Phase 1 construction, which is the Arc Labyrinth Whir and a temporary version of the bypass channel are now complete. That was switched over, the river was essentially switched over to that new channel back in June of 2025. And then we also, with, with the support of the city commission, the Grand Traverse Band of Chippewa Auto Indians and, and the Michigan DNR have a operation and maintenance memorandum of agreement to support the operation and maintenance of Fish Pass has been signed and fully executed. So what we're sit right now with construction in terms of the timeline is they're partial, partway, partway through demolishing the old spillway. If you go out on site, you can see that that's now completely gone. And they're now starting to work inside that new cofferdam. And just kind of give an example of what it looked like when they did transition from the existing dam over to the new Arc Labyrinth Whir. You can see the process where they started to allow the water to backfill into the channel and then slowly remove the sheet pile wall at the upstream end to introduce flow. And I think within, you know, about a few hours even, we started seeing fish already at the base of the dam. So they took to the new channel quite quickly. For Phase 2 construction, that saw the, the shifting of the cofferdam from the south side of the river onto the north side. And they were able to de-water the, all the area inside the cofferdam so that they could do all the work under safe, dry conditions, so you didn't have sediments that were being released into the river. The contractor removed all the remaining sections of the existing Union Street Dam. As part of the, the cofferdam install, I will note, and this was probably, you know, most people are aware because this was in, in the news, as the cofferdam sheets got closer and closer to Central Methodist Church, there was some superficial cracking and settlement that was noted at the church. The contractor stopped progress, be able to evaluate, and closely monitored the, the situation at the church as they restarted construction. And that precipitated a, a switch from the vibratory hammer to install the sheets to an impact hammer. Although it creates more noise, it is a safer method because it, it reduces the amount of vibrations that are transferred in the earth. They were able to then complete the cofferdam and have since gone back through and provided reinforcements to the foundation of the church, as well as replace some of the shoreline material that had, you know, very old construction debris. It was just not, not suitable fill and, and probably related to some of the vibrations that were, were experienced. Those fixes were completed about two weeks ago and the contractor, as of today, finished up a lot of their, in the last portion of the sheet pile work. So until they start to remove all that temporary sheeting, middle of next year, there's no more sheet pile work or loud hammers that'll be going on, on site. But right now, where we're at with the project, we anticipate construction of the fish sorting channels will start by the beginning of December and that will take about six to seven months to complete. And we're still currently under the negotiation process for the Phase 3 portion of the work, which is all the upland work. We anticipate to have that resolved once we have the, our next update to this, this board. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And if, if anybody's interested, you can use the QR code to, to log into our webcam that shows a, a live update of all the work that's been going on at the construction process.
Go ahead, Heather.
So I totally acknowledge that the lamprey is a menace in the, in, in our waterways. But when I walk the beaches, I never see a lamprey. What I see are shocking, astounding amounts of quag or zebra, zebra mussel shells. Is there anything in this Fish Pass that will keep the, the mussels out of, of the Boardman?
They're in Boardman Lake already.
Well, so are other things.
Can we let, we'll let the experts answer.
So, so zebra mussels are already present upstream of the site. They were in all, all of the reservoirs that were all removed. So what, once zebra mussels established in water, they can't really remove them very easily. So we're not preventing them from being able to move upstream into the site because they're more readily moved by boats or kayaks or anything that might have some water in them. Because they're vellagers, their larvae essentially just sit in the water. So they can't swim upstream, but they can be transported upstream through those methods. But in terms of quagga mussels, which are the more prominent issue in kind of deepwater areas of the Great Lakes, Boardman Lake is generally too shallow and they don't like flowing water, so they're not likely a concern. But again, the way that they reproduce and spread is through essentially downstream dispersion of their larvae. So they, they really shouldn't, without any other mechanical means, be able to move upstream.
So basically, you're saying there's nothing we can do about the zebra mussels. They're here to stay. We can't ever get rid of them.
Unfortunately, that's where the state of science is right now.
Keep them out. Jackie?
I had a question about the construction. You mentioned having shifted from vibratory driving to impact driving and the, you know, noise impacts of that. I was saddened to hear that apparently there was structural damage to Central Methodist as well as cosmetic cracking.
So it, it was superficial cracking and there was some settlement on one, on the, would be the southwest corner. And the contractor has a structural engineer that worked with Central Methodist Church to find a solution that would virtually eliminate any further movement. So it was not anything that was deemed a structural concern, but they did pin it down so that one additional sheet pile work would happen on site. It wasn't going to cause any, any additional changes. But once all the sheeting, the temporary sheeting that's in place is removed, the contractor will go in and, and finish all those superficial repairs to the church.
Follow-up question? Why was some other technique like hydraulic pressing or jetting not considered? Hydraulic pressing, I understand, is a silent vibrationless ideal for sensitive areas like urban environments, near existing structures? Was that considered?
I, I'm not too well-versed in, in that technology, but in terms of the, the sheet size that we have, the vibratory and impact hammer were really the only effective solution to be able to install the cofferdam.
Could, could we get some follow-up on that, particularly the soils impact? Because I understand that's a pretty important factor for the choice. And if, if, for instance, it was a cost-driven decision, I'd be interested in understanding that. Thank you.
Mitch?
Question about the bypass channel. You did use the word temporary, but I am a little concerned about the boulder placement. It seems a little aggressive and yes, there will be boulders there. But compared to the three upstream dams last Friday, we had some nice weather. So I kayaked from Brown Bridge in that form of backwaters all the way to downtown and got to see, as I have many times in the past, how those former reservoirs have been removed and restored to a natural river. And yes, that's involve the placement of boulders and woody debris. But because it's a naturally flowing stream and you have the bed scour that entails, there's also movement of gravel, of sediment through the boulders and the boulders don't fix themselves in place. Like, I know one rock that I always tried to turn around when I'm doing a loop upstream, but it has moved downstream about 75 yards. But by the nature of the Arc Labyrinth Whir, you're not going to get a scour pool, a plunge pool at the bottom, you're not going to get the same scour through there. So is there going to be an evaluation of the boulder fill when the project is nearing completion?
Yeah, so, so what the state is right now is it's, it's there for erosion protection under temporary conditions. So it is much more aggressive boulder placement. I mean, it's not even boulders, it's all uniform large rock. And it's just prevent the channel from eroding during temporary conditions. The final shape and, and form of the river section will be very similar in form and function as stretches through like the Saven Dam when it was removed, in which there will be strategic placement of boulders and a riffle habitat. And it'll be much smaller and, and differing material than what you currently see. Again, the temporary condition right now is just for safety and erosion control. But the final form is, is intended to be designed and in place very similar to what you'd see upstream.
So I guess the DNR was right and this is Heather's words, it is not set in stone.
True.
Do you have another question, Jackie?
I do. A, a couple more topics. One of them has to do with funding and this is a, a double-barreled question. I apologize. But I, I'd like an update on the status of funding for Great Lakes Fisheries. I think I read not too long ago that there was some funding that had been withdrawn and I wonder if that was true and if it has affected Fish Pass. And then also, I would like to know where the money is coming from for the onshore amenities, which of course are the ones that our citizens are going to be most appreciative of. And who's, who's arranging that funding? Who's in charge of it and where does it stand?
Okay, so the first question, funding for the Great Lakes Fisher Commission has not changed. It, our full funding through the, the federal government has stayed at the requested levels through the, the president's budget and, and legislature's budget. So we intend that, from our understanding is that there's been no change to our funding structure. What you may be referring to is that a lot of our researchers, as well as our control agents, are the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the U.S. Geological Survey. And those two agencies have been impacted due to the shutdown and the proposals to reduce funding for those programs. That does create some complications, but ultimately the, the funds that are provided to those researchers and those agencies to do the workforce to get lamprey control is funded fully from the Great Lakes Fisher Commission budget. It's the, the staffing levels that have been impacted from changes in, in federal budgets.
And, and I guess that adds, well, the, the, the onshore amenities first.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so that's just with the Great Lakes Fisher question. In terms of the, the Phase 3, all the upland work, that funding is a mix of a couple of different pots of money. It comes from the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, direct funding from the Great Lakes Fishery Commission. We have funding through a grant with the Grand Traverse Band of Chippewa Auto Indians that's coming from NOAA for coastal resiliency. We also have the, an NRTF grant that's through the city from the DNR for some of those upland park features. And I believe that's all of them for the upland features. Yeah, that should be about all of them. All that money is, is allocated or obligated and in hand. So there, we don't have any concerns over that funding not being available to, to finish the negotiation. In fact, about 5 million of it is still with the Army Corps of Engineers as part of the original contract bid from 2020. So that, those funds are already just sitting waiting to be used.
And, and who's the funding czar that coordinates all of those sources?
It's the Great Lakes Fisher Commission.
It is. Thank you. Okay. Can I have one more? This, this has to do with the research project itself, the, the scientific research that will be conducted as far as Fish Pass. Correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was that depending upon the outcome with Fish Pass in Traverse City, that this could become a model program and be replicated throughout other connection points at, between rivers and the Great Lakes. throughout other connection points at, between rivers and the Great Lakes. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
And I, I wondered, within the research proposal, was there a timeline? Is, is there a, a defined period during which the connectivity conundrum will be solved and, and this will become replicatable in a model? And, and if so, how long is that? And what happens to Traverse City's Fish Pass if and when the research project is completed successfully?
Okay. So the, the first question of, of this being exported, it's not necessarily the, the infrastructure. So it's, we're not proposing a Fish Pass at, at sites. It's the lessons that are learned at Fish Pass, how we identify what tools work with what suite of fish, so that each site would get its own unique solution, but it's based on the research that's done here. So that's kind of what we propose is, is exportable. And right now, we're looking at, you know, we have a 10-year commitment with, through our MOA and MOUs to, you know, reach that point with, with the Boardman Outaway River. That doesn't mean that we're, we're saying after 10 years, we're, we're done and out, because one of the things that is prominent in Fisheries Restoration and Fish Pass studies that usually tends to lack is the monitoring after a change is made. So that 10-year period is to, is the initial commitment to come up with that solution, but that's not necessarily the, to say that the monitoring is, is done at that point. So that's, that's the timeframe that we're working with. But certainly, as improvements get made, like say we, you know, with this project, we have development of specific technologies that can, aren't necessarily provide the full solution for the Boardman Outaway River, but are useful for other sites, there's nothing that stops us from being able to export that earlier. So we don't necessarily are waiting for a 10-year timeframe to be able to export the process. In fact, we, the Fish, the project has already supported 26 different publications that are in the science literature that are already feeding into additional research.
Great. And then for any monitoring activities after the existing 10-year MOA, MOUs, MOU, whatever?
Yeah.
Well, will more funding be required for the monitoring activities?
Well, that would be a, a determination for the partnership that, of the signatories of the MOU, how that would be structured.
Okay. So right now, funding expires at the 10-year timeframe of the, of the written agreements?
For now, yes.
For the research.
Thank you.
For the research, correct?
Yes.
And let me ask you this, because one of the points I was going to make is Traverse City in June, I was, had the privilege of welcoming the International Fish Telemetry Conference here, which was the first time it was ever held in North America, and it was because of Fish Pass and because the research that's being done in our region on freshwater. Also, the Freshwater Research Institute, the ground was just, we just had a groundbreaking on that a couple of weeks ago, and that, I was at a panel at the Michigan Economic Development Association where they specifically cited the Fish Pass work and the innovation and the willingness of cooperation around this region is part of the reason why this, they're looking at this space and this place to do this. So my question is, as we have this interest, as we have all of these, this information developing, we, funding for 10 years, funding can come from anywhere, and research projects get proposed all the time. We're not, are we, we're not exclusive, right? If somebody else comes along and says, hey, we've developed this technology that we think might help you, or we have, we're working on this project, you know, it was even included, making sure access to freshwater for research was even included as part of MDOT's project this summer. So that is also on the table, correct? We're not waiting 10 years and not allowing anybody else to, to be a part of all of this, and it's not solely relying on all of us in the long run?
No, no, no. This is a very open collaborative project. We have a, a science team that's made up of between 20 and 30, depending on a given year, of researchers from around the Great Lakes, around North America, a couple from Europe, and, and just to inform the decision of what tools are an option, you know, that's, that's fed from over 300 different studies that are done by people around the world. So this is a very collaborative project, both what's coming into, to our decision-making and what's coming out of the project. And, and we have plans in place within our research model to be able to have avenues for other entities that have potential solutions to be able to come in here and use the site to be able to develop those with the benefit towards, towards Fish Pass's ultimate goal.
Thank you. Other questions?
I do. Just a couple, just a couple of quick ones. Dan, thanks for your presentation. It was really good. I appreciate it. Very eye-opening to what's been going on with Fish Pass. It wasn't brought to my attention until this presentation about the damage to Central United Methodist. And I, I understand that it's a, we're doing something pretty bold and innovative here, and things happen. And awesome, we, we saw that there was a problem, and we stopped, and we looked for a better solution. But maybe Lauren's a better person to ask this question. Who's legally responsible for repairing damages? Is the city on for that?
No. No, so the, this is a Army Corps project, and so the city has allowed the Army Corps to complete the construction on city property. And all of the construction bonds and insurance and indemnification flow from the contractors doing work to the Army Corps and the city. So the contractors ultimately, and their insurer, their carriers and so forth, will be responsible and will take care of all of that. And that's what has been occurring in partnership with the GLFC, and all the partners have been working together to make sure that, that will all be taken care of.
Awesome, that is great to know. The other thing, that sorting channel at the end of it, so we can put the different little modules that are the sorting technologies, which is awesome, very cool. What happens at the end? Because before, we had the dam, and that was the barrier that nothing could get around, and then some fish could make it up the Fish Pass. But now we're going to have essentially this path that is undeterred, except for the sorting technologies. Is there something there? Because, and we looked at some of the, some of the aquatic life that could get up past that, that isn't already up past the, the dam where it was? Go ahead.
Yeah, so, so at the upstream end, for research purposes, you know, when we are concerned what's passed is it's individual fish that make it to the upstream end of the fish sorting channel, but there's ultimately still a dual gate, headgate system that controls flow while preventing any unintended access upstream. So ultimately, it's still, we're doing research below a barrier. And for that 10-year period, we will have, we anticipate, we will have targeted releases of species that are native to the upper Great Lakes upstream. That's a commitment from the tribe as well as the DNR to be able to facilitate. And that allows us to, an opportunity to evaluate, you know, the effectiveness of the tools without having any potential unintended releases, as well as being able, an opportunity to evaluate what those fish are, tag them, and be able to understand what they're doing and how they're interacting and contributing to the fish population upstream. So ultimately, this is a lot of research that's happening below a barrier, but part of that 400-foot length is kind of long-term, being able to provide a, the, the space to hydrologically create a connection. So at the end, it is volitional passage of fish upstream. So we don't have any human interaction where we have to collect them, look at them all, and, and pass them. They can move on their own, but in its base operation, it does not have that connection opportunity.
Okay, that's good to know. With the sorting technologies, all the different like modules that we can put in there, is there, have we talked about like requirements for like the monitoring and maintenance of those as they're in there? Is it like a 24-hour, you have to watch and check these traps or whatever the sorting mechanism was?
So, so a lot of that is, is built into that, that MOA and all the research components that are going on in the channel, that is, you know, that's the, the Fishery Commission's responsibility to, to check those during that research period. The idea is that at the end, we have the recommendations on how you would implement each of those tools and what, what is or isn't the, the operational cost of those. But the, again, the idea is that we want to be able to move away from the reliance on manual intervention. So the idea is that we would have less traps that are just holding fish indefinitely, but returning fish either downstream if they're undesirable, but not necessarily noxious, and only remove those that are, are, you know, really noxious, like the sea lamprey. But I'd note that even sea lamprey, if we're able to just block their movement from upstream and allow passage of native fish, even though we're not removing them, is still a, a positive for this project.
One of the things you were just talking about was there's like a Fisheries and Wildlife Group that will like assess and monitor, or not, the modules that are going in, their scientific worthiness.
Yep.
Do we have anybody at that table? Like, is anybody from the city going to be represented on that, that group of people that talk about, you know, what we're going to want and what the, like, monitoring requirements will be? Is there anything like that?
Yeah, so currently Frank Taturi is on our.
Oh, okay, Frank is, okay, great.
That's all I got. Thanks. And we've had numerous, numerous other city staff that have been part of the, those design teams as well.
Mm-hmm. Great.
Other questions? Thank you for the update, Dan.
You're welcome.
I always appreciate it. I always love watching that video. I feel like we should put that out more often. Okay, we're moving on to new business now. I think you have to recuse yourself, so.
Yeah.
So it is our collective, it's just a motion to go into closed session for our fire associations, collective bargaining, but Commissioner.
Me.
Funk will have to.
Sorry.
Excuse himself. We'll call, you can just stand back there.
Is the MMR country?
No, that's gone. This is just the collective bar. Okay, so this is for the, go into closed session, discuss the collective bargaining agreement. So can we have a motion for that? This would be after final public comment.
I move that the city commission enter into closed session immediately following the public comment portion of the agenda to discuss negotiation strategy in connection with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement with the Firefighters Association as authorized by MCL 15.268, parentheses C.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Sean Anderson. And then we don't usually do public comments, right? Okay, so this is a roll call, though, so can I have you roll call that, please, Sarah?
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. So again, that, this, and then we'll have the next one, will be after general public comment. Also, no action is anticipated, so I just want to make that clear so people don't think that we're, are waiting around for something that might not happen. Ken, you can come back if you want. Oh, really? No, this is yours. No, they changed it. Oh, sorry, wait, are you not supposed to be heard of the city manager one either?
So, so I guess, yeah, we can talk about the conflict of interest. So one of the, when you look at the law that talks about allowing the police or firefighter from being on the city commission, it specifically speaks to contract negotiation issues as something that they have to recuse themselves or exclude them for. It doesn't say anything about manager evaluations, but the, the long-going concern about it is that I am evaluating my boss's boss, and there could be a conflict associated with that. And I don't completely disagree with that, but the law that allows me to be here doesn't speak to that. So I think that, and in the best interests of this right now, I, I will say that I'm an avid supporter of Benjamin, and I, I hope that, I'm recusing myself.
So it's a whole new field for us, so I appreciate that, Ken. Thank you. Okay, so this is now, new business number two, is entering into closed session for periodic evaluation of interim city manager Benjamin Marinetut. Again, this will be after the general public comment. So do I have a motion for this? Go ahead, Jackie.
Yes. I move that the city commission enter into closed session immediately following public comment portion of the agenda to consider the periodic personnel evaluation of interim city manager Benjamin Marinetut as requested by the interim city manager and as authorized by MCL 15.268A.
Support.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that, Commissioner Anderson and Lauren Ness. And so again, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, okay, so that motion passes as well. Now we'll move on to our last bit of new business, which is consideration of introduction with possible enactment for December 1st of a change of ordinances to a couple of different districts. So I will hand that off to Benjamin to kick that off.
Yeah, so it's going to be short from me. Our, our planning director, Sean Winter, is here and can give an overview, and we also have the Planning Commission Chair Debbie Hershey in attendance as well. So Sean, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, Sean Winter, City Planning Director. So this amendment, before you, originated by, through an application submitted by Josiat Consulting with a request to remove the residential density limits in the hospital district. Over the last 15 years, the city has been actively removing the density limits, residential density limits, in their zoning districts, focusing on regulating the size of the structure rather than how the interior is divided. This helps so that the housing and the interior design of the buildings can better meet shifting market demands, and it's actually a hallmark of Form-based Code zoning. So with that in mind, when the Planning Commission received this request, they expanded the consideration to include the remaining districts that had a residential density limit, that being the NMC districts and the hotel resort districts. Now, the hotel resort districts, those density limits only applied to the hotel rooms that were in there, not the multifamily units that were already allowed. So the Planning Commission held their required public hearing on October 7th with proper notice to include all those districts. No one spoke for or against the request at the public hearing. So after consideration, the Planning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend to the city commission approval of the request to remove those. That, again, was a 7-0 vote. We did have two planning commissioners absent that night. So the request before you tonight is simply for introduction, as I think Amy and Benjamin both alluded to. That is a requirement of the process and the charter, which I believe there was a primer put in your packet for how that process works. We're happy to answer any questions on that today. But I do want to highlight that this would allow for no other changes to the standards already in place, so a building couldn't be built taller or bigger or occupy more of a lot. It just gives more flexibility to how the building can be divided on the inside.
Thank you. Do we have any questions right now? Go ahead.
I have to, before we begin, I want to make a brief disclosure in accordance with the city's new ethics ordinance. My spouse serves as an officer of Munson Healthcare, which has facilities located within the hospital districts. However, this agenda item applies generally to all properties within the district, as well as several other districts, including NMC. And it doesn't provide a unique advantage to Munson Healthcare, nor was the change requested by Munson. I consulted with the city attorney in accordance with the ethics ordinance, and based on that guidance, I don't believe there's a contractual, a financial, or otherwise disqualifying conflict of interest. I'm confident in my ability to remain impartial, and unless my fellow commissioners see otherwise, I intend to participate in both the discussion as well as the vote.
Commissioner Anderson?
If I could ask, am I correct that of the two hospital zones, one of them exclusively comprises Munson Hospital-owned property? Or do I have that wrong?
I don't have the map in front of me, but I think you're on the right track. There's an H1 and an H2 sub-district, and the, the prime hospital location makes up one of those two, and I can't remember which one it is.
And so zoning changes that could perhaps change the, the property value of, of Munson-owned property, that, that would not be considered a conflict?
No, how we always approach these type of zoning decisions is if there is a zoning change that affects an entire zone or, or several zoning districts and is not particular to one property, then that would not be a conflict, because it, it's like saying, say there's a change to all the residential in the city, nobody would be able to vote because you all live in the city. So if it is particular to your home, or maybe even your block, that would be maybe a different analysis. But if it's the entire zone without any particular benefit or detriment to one particular property owner, then it's not a conflict.
I, I must say, I would, I would be a lot more comfortable if the Mayor Protem was willing to, is there a way to partition off her vote so that it does not impact the zoning of that particular zone that is exclusively Munson-owned property?
Well, while we're having this conversation, and this is where the conversation is going, I'll disclose on that I am working for the next three years on a contract with NMC and Michigan Works. I'm paid by EDGESTAFF as a third party, but I have, I guess I could be seen as having interest in NMC as well by that definition, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's a, it's a snowball.
Well, it's a snowball, but it also makes the point of then, so none of us can vote on residential, or that, I don't financially benefit from NMCs, and I was going to disclose it, but the conversation started this way. I don't have any benefit from NMC getting that changing, but if that's seen as that way, then I guess I'll recuse myself.
If I could, if I could just play with that idea that you don't benefit, a, a removal of the residential density cap for NMC's campus would enable construction of considerably larger amounts of student housing than are current, is currently allowed. That in turn enables higher enrollments, which enables, can I, can you, which enables higher enrollment and, you know, hiring of more employees. So eventually, this trickle-down.
I'm on a three-year grant dictated by the state. That doesn't affect my pay at all. So I'm confused.
So I'm confused, we're getting where that benefits me.
You know, I presumed that a benefit to NMC might possibly enable renewal of your grant?
That's a state grant, so no, it would not.
Okay.
I guess my concern with, I mean, I'm, I'm just going to say this, as someone who's sat on the ethics policy, so we have, Munson's one of our major employers, NMC is one of our major employers, we have a commissioner who is, works for the city, so are we really saying that people who don't work for any other employers, as long as they don't work for other employers, otherwise there could be conflicts if somebody worked at a hotel, if somebody worked at a rental company or anything else, as an employee, not an owner? I'm guessing, trying to figure out where your threshold is for comfortableness.
You know, if, if, if eventually it comes to the potential for personal benefit, I think that has to be our, our bright line in the sand. And, you know, compensation packages are complicated things, and I am certainly not privy to, you know, the level of detail that's, that's necessary to make a judgment, and that's why we, in the ethics ad hoc, agreed that, you know, we, we needed an individual to initiate the conversation. I'm saying, I'm, I haven't heard enough information that I'm, I'm personally comfortable with that decision, and I'm asking if there are other solutions that would allow our mayor Protem to participate to the extent that there is obviously not a conflict, and whether there's a way to partition off the portion that could be seen as questionable.
And again, Jackie, I, I don't see that I have a conflict. This is my spouse's employment. I feel very comfortable I can be impartial, particularly on this agenda item, which is just whether to introduce the topic. But, you know, clearly, the commission needs to have some discussion around that. I don't see any contractual or financial personal benefit to myself based on this zoning change of the H1 or the H2.
Mitchell, do you want to say something? You had started to.
Well, I had said that, or started to say that NMC has, in fact, made significant reductions in the level of on-campus and directly off-campus student housing since I was a student there. There used to be over 200 dorm rooms, and now there are not. NMC's enrollment numbers have ebbed and flowed over the years. They had some change during the pandemic as an increase in virtual and hybrid learning that they were able to pivot to, but now, once again, they have stabilized at a lower number than we had 20 years ago. And I don't see NMC building more housing or on-campus housing as something that would lead to more students being there. If we had a better pipeline of career tech programs throughout area high schools that directly fed into certification programs that NMC offers, that would be something that does increase enrollment. But housing by itself has not been an identified need by NMC to meeting increased enrollment.
I'm going to suggest that, given this conversation, that we bring this whole item back on the first, with Lauren's legal opinion within it, since this is becoming a discussion through the lens of the ethics policy and different interpretations. I would like to have our attorneys in there, and then we can have this conversation and bring this item back, and we will have our full commission.
So would a, a motion to table it for tonight be appropriate?
Do we need that, or is that just construction staff?
We don't have to have one, but if you'd like, you can make a motion to refer it. You don't want to move to table. You could make a motion to refer it to the December 1st meeting.
What would the difference be?
If you make a motion to table an item, then you have to make a motion later to take it off of the table, so it's, I mean, your point is to just move it to the next meeting, so.
Then I move to refer it to the December 1st meeting for introduction.
Second.
Okay. Commissioners Anderson and Shaw, any discussion from the cushion on that item?
I'd like to hear what Commissioner Boomer S. say about it.
Great. We will bring it back then for the first. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, roll call, please.
One moment. Commissioner Shaw? Sorry.
Um, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Treadwell?
Oh.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Commissioner Funk?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion passes. That will now be referred to our December 1st meeting for some analysis there. Okay, that is the end of our agenda. Do we have any reports from anybody's boards to share? All right, seeing none, this now time for final public comment. If anybody has any comments on anything, whether it was on the agenda tonight or in general, please feel free to approach the podium.
I'm Hannah Westcott, Director of Jubilee House. You haven't started my timer.
Oh. How honest of you.
Traverse City's drop-in center for adults experiencing homelessness. There may be an assumption that everything is all right within our homeless response system, but agencies which care for homeless individuals are witnessing a growing crisis. Since the closure of the Pines encampment this past spring, Safe Harbor has seen unprecedented numbers, and as conditions in our country worsen, those numbers will only rise. We're seeing it already. Safe Harbor has turned away 10 to 20 people almost every night in the past couple months, and they have counted a total of 68 individuals turned away since mid-October. With all available shelter beds now regularly full, more people are being forced to find shelter outdoors each night. I met a gentleman on the day he was discharged from Munson, having just been forcibly, forcibly removed from his former home. His first time being homeless, unfamiliar with downtown Traverse City, unable to get into shelter, I watched him call everybody he could think of before he gave up. It is heart-wrenching to see the fear and disbelief in someone's eyes when you tell them they will have to spend a cold winter night on the street, even worse when they learn of the limited supplies we can offer. Since camping ordinances are now being enforced everywhere, giving folks a tent would be like giving them a ticket they can't pay. Jubilee House only has sleeping bags, tarps, and sleeping bag coats, and we warn our friends to hide, to remain in compliance with ordinances. Though the city was correct that living situations or living conditions in the Pines were unacceptable, the centralized encampment had important upsides. Housing outreach and medical workers had easy access to their clients, and campers had easy access to resources and help. Those poor living conditions have not improved, they've simply been transported, and our regions' turn toward an out-of-sight, out-of-mind approach has made our campers afraid to call for help lest they reveal their campsites and be forced to move. It is foolish to believe that the stalwart Pines residents had anywhere else to go. If they did, they wouldn't have been living there. Addiction and mental health struggles did not end when the city closed the Pines. Without a designated place for unhoused folks to do their thing, even their most unsavory activities have spilled out into local parks and public areas. And, most alarmingly, now that our friends are constantly being displaced, they are no longer able to insulate their tents or stock their campsites to prepare for the winter. Ultimately, the closure of the Pines solved nothing. It simply forced our most vulnerable unhoused neighbors into hiding, further from help, and scattered all around town in parks and neighborhoods. The closure was executed prematurely, before real solutions were in place to protect its former residents. The choices our community has made could cost my friends their lives this winter, as external forces drive more vulnerable people into homelessness. Our existing resources are already stretched to their limit, and winter has barely begun. The Housing and Homelessness Task Force, in which Jubilee House is proudly engaged, is diligently working on a solution, which will take years to come into effect, but we are in an emergency state right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have any other general public comment at this time?
Hi, Brian Fleetwood with Trigas again. So propane can propel Traverse City toward carbon neutrality goals. Traverse City's climate plan is bold, but is balanced. Traverse City is one of Michigan's hottest summer destinations, and propane is already playing a role in making it run. From backyard grills to food trucks at summer festivals, propane is an integral part of daily life in the North. As the city advances its climate goals, it's worth remembering how this familiar, efficient fuel can also support long-term sustainability. Traverse City's 2025 Climate Action Plan aims for 100% renewable electricity by 2040, with investments in solar, battery storage, and grid updates, including the fiber expansion. However, as the city pushes for electrification, one clean and practical energy resource is being overlooked: propane. Much of the city's climate plan related to the transportation sector aims to shift the city's infrastructure more towards a people-centric street design, while a measure to increase foot traffic is an effective solution to reducing emissions. Opting for a cost-effective vehicle solution, such as utilizing propane vehicles for the city's fleet, would further their green initiative cost-effectively. With no need for charging infrastructure, propane buses still offer 150-plus metric tons of CO2 reduction annually, a compelling lower-cost path to clean transportation. And why propane aligns with Traverse City's clean energy vision would be its cleaner, affordable, and grid-independent. Lower greenhouse gas, it has lower greenhouse gas emissions than diesel, over 90% NOx reduction compared to diesel, fast deployment and reliable performance in cold climates, and no grid updates are needed, ideal for rural heating, and also renewable propane is entering the Michigan market. Local fleet operators across Michigan are already switching to propane, citing reduced emissions, lower costs, and easier maintenance. These real-world success stories show how propane performs reliable, reliably, even in harsh weather and high-mileage conditions, making it a practical, clean energy partner for Traverse City. And as far as balancing the push, the city's energy plan emphasizes electrification, but a more balanced approach could include low-emission propane, especially for schools, transit, and rural housing. As far as school buses, propane versus the alternatives in Traverse City, Traverse City Area Public Schools operate nearly 100 diesel-powered buses. Both propane and electric buses offer clearer, cleaner, active, cleaner alternatives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got some graphs and graphics. Can I leave it with the clerk?
Thank you. Yep, you can leave it with the clerk.
I will.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment for tonight?
Hannah just inspired me. I'm Debbie Hershey, 305 East 8th Street. I'm very exhausted. I just drove 1,800 miles in three and a half days to bury someone that I love very much. And I'm only here tonight because housing was on your agenda. I commend Hannah for the work she does and for her bravery, standing up and speaking to you as eloquently as she did tonight. But when you think of housing in the future, I want you to see her face, because this is who we have to fight for, for our young people to stay in this town and to help employers to work here. This is why I'm still on the planning commission, is for people like her. Let's find a way, please, to attack this housing issue and get it done. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other final public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. We are going into closed sessions. We will return to adjourn the meeting, but we will not be taking any action, so that is just, if people want to hang around to see me bang a gavel, you can. Otherwise, our next meeting will be December 1st, and we hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving break. Thanks.
Thank you. Understood.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
They.
They.
Seize us up every once in a while and I have to talk to Jerry.
Hey, you're still here!
Yeah, I had emails to check. I, so they were required, it started requiring two-factor authentication and I'd never set up the, the way to do that. So Jerry was able to jump in there and get it fixed for me and I'm eternally grateful and fifty emails deep now.
Yeah, it lets me out every once in a while, but Jerry, the last time it was a, I think I emailed him on a Saturday, on a Sunday, and he got right back to me and then I, I told him never to do that.